Okay, everyone, it's 3:09. We'll go ahead and we'll call this meeting to order if we can all stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll go ahead and we'll have roll call in attendance. Well, in attendance, we have Supervisor Carol, Ed, Doug, Bob, and myself. So we have all board in attendance. I need a motion for approval of the final agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, public comment.
All right, I have two. First one up, they both appear to be non-agenda. So first up is Rod Senior. Just reminder, three minutes.
Welcome back. Been a long time, Rod.
Thank you. I've been away and I've tried my best to keep in touch. Hope you'll just give me a little bit of a break. I have a lot to say in three minutes, but please.
Be disciplined, otherwise.
Three minutes.
All right. First thing I'm gonna do is pass these out. Does anybody got another one?
No, good. I put one in here, so.
All right. Thank you, guys. All right, photograph that I'm passing around.
Please state your name for the record.
Rod Senior Gateway Greens.
Need one more for Tony.
Excuse me?
Oh, sure, Bob.
I have a spare one here.
Spit some ink here.
Rod Senior. All right. Chelsea, this is embarrassing. The Alpon Bank is in a bad way. This is where I live. I understand that Al is retiring. You just mentioned that. I assume she's the person responsible for the contractors. And I assume that algae staining and weeds are in the lake contractor specification. Well, they're not following it if that's in the spec and somebody is not managing them. So please don't let the water rise in the rainy season and cover this lot. It really needs fixing straight away.
Let's not interrupt. We have three minutes. Sorry, Rod. Go ahead.
What was the problem?
We'll ask you at the end.
Okay. This segues into Ponbank restoration generally. $58 million bond validation, of which 30 million is Ponbank. And $18 million of SRF loan is Ponbank. This is a huge amount that this community is being charged for Ponbank restoration. We're not in danger of being served a violation by South Florida Water Management. Just reflecting back on when I was on the board, Alma Max was $90 a foot. Linear foot. And I understand that Metro, when they bid on our 116 pond, which is where I live, it was $245 a foot. I phoned up Alma Max in Austin today. I phoned up Propex in Chattanooga. They're gonna be suffering a lot due to tariffs on the material that Alma Max is made of, as well as the aluminum anchors. So this might be the time to review how we're, what we're spending on this Ponbank restoration. Ed, you and I went to Heritage Palms a long time ago, 2015. They've done a very respectable job using G O Tube and matting. But if this, if what we have is the Cadillac, you know, I think it's time to think about getting a Chevy and just backing off a bit. We really don't need to spend this kind of money, in my opinion. There's gotta be another solution. Next point is that I think the methods of financing our capital projects are overlapping. We've got four different methods going on. We've got the elephant in the room, which is the $58 million bond validation, of which 1213 has been issued already, primarily for the park and the admin building. We've got the 18 million SRF loan, which is nearly all Ponbank. We've got the capital reserve study, which is a big question mark, even Steven Blum, who I spoke with for half an hour today, can't, really hasn't got a fix on what the results of that capital reserve study is for Enterprise Fund and General Fund. In other words, what is the contribution from the community coming out of that capital reserve study? It's not clear. And then we had the $7 million five-year bond, a loan from the bank that's been spent or rolled into the bond. All in all, the $58 million at 4% over 20 years amounts to about a $1,000 hike in our property taxes for the 5,000 Gateway homes. That's a lot, and it's gonna affect my ability to sell my house, once it gets burnt through, and I'm worried about that. Final point. I just wanna say that the office building, I think, is.
Rod, your time's up. Can you wrap it up in the next 30 seconds, Rod?
I'm sorry?
Go ahead and wrap it up in the next 30 seconds.
Thanks. I think this office building is way over the top. $7 million or whatever the number is for 14 white-collar staff is half a million dollars per staff member. I think that's ridiculous. And I tried to get the Boy Scout building. Didn't work out. Bill Guine got a new bar block to it. I could've got it for 350, 350 grand, and it would've done the job. Please support an effort to turn over our soccer complex to Lee County. It's what we need to do. It's gonna cost us 600 grand for floodlights. It's costing us 400 grand every year for maintenance. We need to turn it over, so. And I got that started. Let me know if I can help.
All right, thank you, Rod. All right, next up, we have Joe Schofield regarding parks and rec.
Well, good afternoon, distinguished members. I have a question about.
Just announce yourself.
Oh, Joe Schofield from Pelican Preserve. I've been following a number of these meetings concerning parks and recreation and the methodology that was approved at the last public meeting. And my questions are Pelican Preserve, people my age that have activities that we enjoy, and how they're being addressed or planning to be addressed going forward, if we're going to be, as it's been quoted as, one gateway. And if it's one gateway, we're part of that, and my age bracket is part of that. So I'm asking, what are your thoughts and plans and actions to accommodate us at our point? Our interests certainly aren't in the younger soccer games, for sure. But we're interested in things like maybe a waiting pool, or bocce ball, or pickleball, maybe even a softball diamond. And game rooms and social meeting places. So there are the things that would be of interest to me, and I'm sure other people in my age bracket. So I'm concerned, there was a survey that was sent out to Gateway residents at one time that was never sent to Pelican Preserve residents as part of Gateway. And is there going to be, or is there a plan to bring Pelican Preserve residents up to speed and get our input on what Parks and Recreation should look like? Because we're not gonna be a part of that, from what I see, moving forward. So my question is, what are your plans? What are we doing moving forward? And how are you going to accommodate the needs? Because taxes buy benefits, and what benefits would we be getting out of all of this stuff? And I would certainly like you to address this as soon as possible, rather than later. And I thank you for that.
Thank you. I don't have any more public comment.
Okay, so I kinda, so I would like us to go back before we move to another topic, to go back to just two items that Rod had mentioned. One was, I just wanna clarify what algae staining was. Rod, are you talking about algae staining on the rocks?
Yes.
Okay, that's something, okay, so that's something that is not in our contract, so that's. And that is a fear that I had when we wanted to do the rocks, because I remember visiting Naples and seeing five years, and I personally aesthetically did not like the look. So that's something that, what you see is what you're gonna get. It's not gonna get better because it's not within the contract. And then the second was the weeds. And I think Daniel touched about this at the last meeting, if not the meeting before, that there was a need to increase for additional spraying during the dry months. Am I?
Yes, and then also, we did have a turnover of the contract.
That I don't care.
So, but yes, that is, that is the case.
So, so then let me ask you this. So if we had a turnover in the contract, like a whole, a whole new vendor?
Yes, completely new vendor.
So when the older vendor left, it was sprayed. So we had a turnover, but we didn't have a lack of service, so.
That's what I have to follow up on, because it turned over mid-month. It didn't turn over at the start of the. So we'll follow up on this.
Well, in addition to that, they've been going around putting in stone, extra stone on some of the ponds. Our pond, Rod's referring to, needs stone. It's needed stone for a long time, but it got omitted. I don't know why.
So that Work Order Management System I referred to earlier, we do have Ponbank inspections, and all of these comments, stone, point repairs, overgrown grass, all of these are notes that are made in that inspection list. And so we're taking, for our staff, to then take and then action it with the vendor, if it's a follow-up, or if it's an action item for internal staff to do point repairs or contracted out point repairs. So we're getting it documented from our side as well as the vendor's.
Okay, so then here's slightly frustration. And I haven't visited the new contract, but both of the contracts and ponds specifically, they were to be included and be supplied, the vendor to supply staff with pictures and with the report. And the report was to be combined with what staff wanted it to see, because I remember seeing the report very generally about five years ago. And I said, okay, I see those questions and those answers and those columns, and they really don't apply to us. So I remember at that time, Al had partnered with the vendor and with looking at what our needs and what we're looking at as a priority, and created that report, that chart. And that was to be used on a monthly basis, so.
I haven't seen it. I'll follow up with staff and make sure that we've received it for the two months that this vendor has been with us.
Yeah. But even with the other one, like if you're saying there's a lapse of, okay.
And this isn't like.
That's not.
I mean, in the rainy season, you're gonna have these rapid growths.
Can I just ask you guys if you wanna take a conversation, if you're gonna step to the other room?
You're gonna have some rapid growth during the rainy season. This is not something that just grows in two or three days. This takes time. And this is based on the previous conversation that we had, you know, around accountability, controls, like, this, I mean, staff should know this. This should be documented somewhere in a report that says, and if it's me, if it's my department, whoever I have in charge of the ponds, I say, if you run across any violations, you send them to me, because I wanna make sure Chelsea has them, so she doesn't get blindsided in a board meeting, whether it's Ed. But we should never have a resident come up to this board saying that they're having maintenance issues on their pond with things like this, because it's not being sprayed or. And hopefully, the solution will be, oh, yeah, we're aware of this, and it has been sprayed, the spray just hasn't taken into account yet. But like, this is the stuff that drives me crazy, because we are paying staff, we're paying vendors, we have contracts to mitigate these types of issues. And if we keep having these things, whether it's litorals exceeding our control boundaries, or, you know, like, the rocks, okay, yeah. We need to put some more rocks on, okay, that's just normal, you know, that's no more. Like, this stuff drives residents crazy. And we spend all this money, and they look out their backyard, and it's just filled with, filled with grass. And I don't know what to do about algae. But it's basically, your issue is algae and the excessive growth.
The issue is weeds.
Weeds.
I was gonna say algae, within the pond standard, there is no issue with algae.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just wanted to make sure I knew what he was, what the issues were.
Algae, 15% of the pond can be covered with algae, and that's acceptable. So algae's not an issue. It's weeds.
And I'll go back to, if we're not aware of these things, either we're not documenting, or we don't have the proper bandwidth of, within staff, or the vendors that were using.
I mean, I can see that now.
Are not, are not being held accountable. So this is where I always go back to the org plan. We have to make sure that we're adequately staffed for all the production hours. And again, I'm not trying to, I mean, staff does a really good job. And some of these things, you know, might fall through the cracks, but this is what we gotta get ahead of. Like, these are kind of my pet peeves here.
So if you follow up with, at least with me, and I don't care of the rest of the board, regarding the checklist?
The form is, it's the same form being used. We're trying to implement that into Cartograph. That way, it is our asset management system, and we can have a tracking record of when certain things were done. That way, it's tied back to the asset, but we will follow up.
So staff's out there, they take a picture of the issue, they log it, and then you've got, in your, in your main system, we've got 20 items that we're tracking. One is, you know, excessive weed growth on pond or Lake 116. We alert the vendor that needs to be addressed. They respond. And we have, we have an action item.
Yeah, it's both. Both is occurring.
Because the vendor is to provide staff, because the vendor is going on a monthly basis, and then staff was going every bi-monthly or quarterly. They were not, because they were getting the reports. And if they were seeing something on the vendor's side, like, hey, we had to heavily spray this, then they were visiting the site.
Rod, question for you. Is this the first time that you're letting us, that you're alerting the district that, of your concern here?
It's not the first time this happened. It's the first time I've come to the board and told that it's been a problem for a while.
Okay, yeah. So again, that's where we need to encourage.
So those are the.
That's why we.
So hey, send an email to customer care or whatever the response is.
Well, that's part of the reason why we're implementing Cartograph in these inspections, from our side, and not solely relying on the vendor to, you know, what pay, you pay them for, but we need some checks and balances from staff, from our side as well. So we'll follow up, Rod. I'll personally email you with a follow-up.
What size stone is this?
57.
This is the old number four stone.
This is four. And we've gone bigger now, right?
So we have gone thicker, like that was like maybe two inches. And now, I mean, I visit two ponds and Gateway Greens, and oh my God, they look great, like.
So we're using size four on all of, our pond standard for rehab is size four from.
It's not a requirement, size four.
What we've been using?
Yes.
From low water mark to control elevate, or above.
But I believe we're doing really four inches. So number four, a four inches, and before was number four.
Yeah, this is really harsh.
Okay.
What's, the problem on this one is that if you go down West Link's Drive, we have three ponds that are visible from the road looking out, and they're immaculate.
Are they newer?
They are newer.
Okay.
They are newer.
All right, so did anybody wanna touch anything on parks and recs on Joe's?
Uh, yeah, just real quick, Joe, so.
Because we talked about it in the.
Oh, it's better. So one of the things that we did throughout, I mean, really years of preparation on the parks is when we were gathering kind of voice of, voice of the residents and dealing with our consultants, is looking at amenities that would, would be beneficial for multi-demographics and A and H groups. So that's why, if you look at what we kind of landed on, those items can be leveraged by seniors, the middle-aged, kids, whatever. So it's one thing to have facilities that meet multi-demographics that represent our community. But the important thing, which I brought up earlier, is you've gotta have someone driving, you know, facilities is great. But if you've got pickleball in one location, why would you drive to go play pickleball in another, in another location? That's where having someone that is managing programs and benefits is really important. And we've never, ever, as long as I've been here, we've had someone that manages the leagues, which all that means is they coordinate with the soccer and the flag football league, and just make sure they're paying on time and that they're keeping the facilities at a certain standard. They're not promoting or driving that new programs within Gateway, which I think is something that has absolutely been missed. I know in Stony Brook, we're sitting on a softball field that has not been used for probably 10 years. So instead of creating a Gateway softball league and trying to partner with communities that have amenities that would be willing to share them for a, you know, a senior softball league or whatever, we just don't do not, we don't do anything. And, and we, so I think one of the things with the new park is we have to make sure that we've got the facilities, but we also have the programs to benefit the residents. Because if I'm in Pelican, I understand why you may not be behind Parks and Rec. You've got all your amenities. But if we could offer programs that could bring Pelican seniors over and be able to mingle and have opportunities for, for social opportunities with seniors in Gateway Greens or seniors in Stony Brook, well, now you've got a reason. It's not about the facilitation of the pickleball event, whatever event. It's about the social thing and the program that drives it. And to me, I think that's gonna be absolutely important in driving benefit and continued improvement and buy-in on these facilities is the programs that drive it, not necessarily the facilities within itself.
And Doug, if I could add to that, half of this administrative building, not only do we have the boardroom, which can be treated as flex space, we have two conference rooms that can have an accordion wall that can be treated as either card games, programming, exactly what Doug was saying. That is literally dedicated towards public, towards programming, if we wanna rent out those spaces, if we wanna have a sock hop, you know, in the boardroom. I mean, the options are endless, but the point of having flex space and having that air-conditioned space was key to how can we expand our existing services. And so I think you just volunteered yourself to work with me on some programs with our Parks and Rec person. I would love, love to take some time and sit down with you if you do so. Thank you. Appreciate that.
And Rod, a quick one?
Flavia, could I respond to that, please?
Yes. Do you want them, do you want them to get up here?
Yeah, I would love.
They've been waiting. Yeah. Okay, who's waiting? Okay, Rod, would you just, do you wanna capture everything? No, no, it's not the time. It's that I wanna be able to hear.
Thank you. Doug, thank you for that. Appreciate it. You mentioned Pelican and Stony Brook has been examples of Parks and Rec, the facilities that have been used and working. The difference, one of the many differences at the Gateway Commons Park, number one is that the majority of the community voted against a park in the survey.
Well, that's not, that's not.
Well, it's true. It was, it was, over 50% said no.
That's not a majority, that's.
Let's not debate it.
Would have been if they'd accounted for it.
I'm sorry?
Okay, can we all, Rod, just speak?
Okay. That's the first thing. But the second thing is that Gateway Commons is an open area. It's not with behind gates like Stony Brook and Pelican. And please don't underestimate the cost of security, and you've gotta put chain link fence around the whole thing, I would imagine, and access control technology. How are you gonna prevent outsiders getting in? And do you have a warm body in there 24/7? Has that been considered?
Yes, I will answer for you, because yes, the only thing that we haven't decided if it's going to be a full perimeter around, or if we're gonna build fences as we're building the amenities. So either it's going to be a one-time upfront, be the expense, which will be the whole thing around, or given the, you know, financially, like, are we gonna do small areas at a time? Because I know we talked about the pickleball fencing and the access control for that. So yes, it's going to be, what exactly that's going to look like, we don't know. And then for me personally, it will be a financial decision, like, what makes more sense.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything different?
No, no. And I think having the sheriff's outreach there will be a huge deterrent. I mean, if we just had a sheriff's vehicle parked here, and matter of fact, we do on Fridays at the game, there's a sheriff officer that parks here, has his lights on, and about 90% of the time, it deters people from parking where they're not supposed to. Not 100%, but a lot of times, just that presence is a good deterrent. But again, my point on the parks is, in order for, in order, in order for everyone to appreciate it, you at least have to give everyone the opportunity to take advantage of it. Not everyone will, but it is what it is.
Well, the one thing about the number of people that voted for it, didn't vote, I'd like a little clarification, because if we take the totality of the district, it was overwhelmingly rejected. Does anybody disagree with that?
I disagree with that.
It wasn't overwhelming?
Matter of fact, it was, it was four up until last year.
How many wanted it in Pelican? What was the number that came back?
You said together, though.
I don't know. I didn't have to go back. I don't have that.
I think it was 50/50 for Gateway, but Pelican was excluded. And then Pelican was surveyed. I don't know what the results of that were, but I would expect it to have been like 95%.
It was 90-some-odd percent.
Percent against it. To me, that's overwhelming. 40% of the community, 90% of Pelican didn't want it. So I don't wanna, you know, BS ourselves. We're going forward. We voted on it, and we'll probably go forward with the rest of it. But don't have any misunderstanding about whether our residents want it. They do not. Some do. Well, I mean, the data is the data. I just wanna clarify that. Second thing, to Joe's point. When the original Parks and Rec Committee was formed, it was not an exclusion of Pelican, but Pelican had no equity in it. So I don't think there were any Pelican members other than our chairman. And now that we are, after the Rule 6 repeal, since we're gonna be financing that at some portion, now it would be appropriate to try and solicit some people over there, if they wanna get it on the committee.
So this is, this is, this is a spot for me, because I personally remembering asking, the same way that I have been asking for years for Pond's Committee, if they'll be willing to come to Gateway and take a look at it. Always I get a yes, but never an action. When Parks and Rec happen, this is exactly what happened. The money doesn't come from us, so we don't wanna get involved, because it was open, and I wanted it, because my thought was, why reinvent the wheel? When we have a success there, then we can talk about opportunities, and we can talk, and you know how many people came? None. And that was the reason why me, I wanted to appoint Carol, because I wanted her to be able to, what can she bring for us here, at least that?
I totally agree with you, Flavia. The difference was, the flavor.
She didn't pay, didn't care.
No, 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 well.
Yes, this is actually what it was.
You can say that, but the, but the difference really was, and we, I heard this many times, why do you people vote with something you're not gonna pay for? We were actually attacked for that. Why does Pelican support the parks when they know they don't have to pay for it? So that, you know, which side of the nickel do you wanna look at?
And I, I'm against it, because you're not sitting on the Pelican Preserve Board, so I will support you. You're sitting on the Gateway.
I totally understand that.
But that, I mean.
But I'm also representing, and I try to represent everybody, well, a large percentage of the people that voted for me didn't want the park. Not, not me personally, but a large percentage. So you can't have it both ways. You can't say, Pelican, you're criticized for supporting a park that you're not gonna pay for. Well, okay, now we're paying for it. So it's a big difference. We're paying a portion.
But my, so here's my question, and here's, you're not sitting here as Pelican. So I needed to look at the documents in depth into every item, financial or not, without a title.
Well, we do.
And with all the respect, Bob, you don't do that, because it's on April 1st. You're very clear on your email, and I wanna get to that later on. You do not. So I, I believe if we wanna omit.
I had an April 1st email.
Yeah, if we wanna omit, and I'll get, I'll get into that, but if we wanna omit the Pelican, we are in a board. And our respect, Carol, as she had asked, and I thought it was a good idea, we are in the district, right? So I don't really personally care. I look at Pelican items as if they were anything else. I don't care what their name or the title of the headline. It is a financial. I'm gonna look at it. I don't go in and say, because the committee of Pelican Preserve is okay with this, I'm just gonna put my blessing. If I have questions, I will, the same way in the landscaping committee, because I thought it was absurd that the committee wanted to spend an additional $80,000, because if you wanna talk about money, it's, it's.
You've lost me. I don't know what you're talking about.
The contract that we just awarded it, we didn't, we ordered a contract to a vendor for Pelican Preserve that is $80,000 more. It wasn't, it wasn't the lowest item. It was because we, the committee wanted to stick with the current vendor that it had.
And we do that all the time, okay?
And there was a cost. There was an $80,000 cost to that part of the budget.
A new two budget.
And I supported that.
Because the people that are paying for it wanted to pay for it.
But I don't, I, is that?
The people that are paying for it wanted to pay for it.
The committee, that's, that's what the committee said to us.
Yeah, that's the committee that pays for it.
No, the residents pay for it. The committee doesn't pay for it. All the residents pay for it.
No, you don't pay for it.
All the residents of Pelican pay for it.
You don't pay, that's right. So the committee of people that represented Pelican recommended, if you're saying it's 80,000, I have no idea the difference. But we accepted their recommendation, which we've done for the whole 15 years I've been coming over here.
So I would disagree.
I'm not sure what your point was.
I would disagree with the, that the voice of the committee, because not even our voices like that, it's with it what they want. Because we have residents that say that they're opposed and they agree to certain items that is totally different than the committee. So I am going to respect the committee's decision and their input, but I would disagree that what the committee does at all times is what the residents want. And I'm just gonna leave it as that.
Could I, just one clarification. Pelican has always had the opportunity of, they are a Gateway resident, to be on the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee regardless.
Right.
There's, there's not any need in changing of a resolution for a Pelican to be on Prac Committee.
I totally understand that and support it. And now.
We have all the decisions now, so. There you go. Joe?
All right.
But the last comment, Flavia, we've had a number of 3-2 votes since last September, and you're telling me that nobody had voted based on where they lived. Bullshit.
I'll ask you to refrain from those comments, the same way that I have asked Ed to refrain from those comments, I mean, Bob, I already commented, just because you said that.
Moving right along.
All right, so let's move it on to local achievements and recognition.
All right, I have one. We have reluctantly attending our meeting today are Mike and Alex. Want to give them kudos. We received an email from a resident in Pelican. I'll read it without disclosing who the resident is. So last week, Tuesday, I fell around the corner just from our house. Two of your staff, I'm sorry, I did not get their names. It happened to be Mike and Alex, were painting the Verona Monument when it happened. I screamed loudly. They immediately rushed over to help. They helped me get up, got me to the door of my house, fixed the walker I was using, and gave me lots of good advice about not laying down, icing my head where I had bumped it, calling my husband, et cetera, while asking repeatedly if I was all right. Please give them both a huge thank you for me, and let them know, I'm gonna skip this part, that their quick action, no dumb. that their quick action, no dump helped to prevent worse injuries. The way they jumped into action was very important.
Aww.
Nice job, Phil.
Good job with the painting, too.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, John.
Thank you. All right, so, along to, we have committees and items to report, we have none? Okay, approval minutes?
So moved.
There's a motion, a second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say aye. Nothing on content agenda, this should end here.
Next meeting.
Eleven A. We'll start back on-
Back to the room.
We're going to call it works?
Yes, ma'am. Any questions? I have one written every-
That was in the-
And, and because it was in the bond, then we were required to do it?
I don't know, you have your own guess. Similar to our budget, half the money has to stay within that silo. So if you had another project that was in the bond series, underwater, we may-
No, it's not reallocating of monies, because I know we learned from Pelican Preserve that the goal was pond areas everywhere, and then there was not any for us, so as, so I want to make sure that when we do a project, that hundred and seventy-nine thousand, is that for the vision two years ago, or vision after getting knowledge from the Pelican Preserve ponds group?
You're not going to get very many done for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
That's what I was thinking, because I divided, I was like, want to get, and so that's what I was thinking.
So we had put some aerators in, first year I started, a couple of ponds where they run electrical service. That ate a lot of money. This, unless you have a different direction, but the money is dedicated for aerators and any top line ones, you can do-
I think this is an item that I would like maybe talking, because I know you guys learned that-
It's as much paying to put electrical as it is to do everything else.
Yeah, so I think that is something that you need, is that a need for all of it, and the quantity of it, and then the dollar amount.
Well, you just lay out the hundred and eight ponds. How many have electric?
Well, aerating the trunk-like ponds makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
The issue is getting the electrical to those ponds, there's your problem. And getting hismen and all that.
A hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars won't touch it.
No, no, you're talking, it's going to be millions. But anyway, set a plan out, how many ponds, how many do we have now? And do a number per year based on how much we will spend.
Start with, can run electricals.
Yeah. Yeah, some of the electric is easy, some is a real problem.
What is the direction to start with trunk line and then go from there?
Trunk line, yes.
That's the way I would do it.
Yes, but then, but even with the trunk lines?
What's trunk line, I'm unfamiliar with that.
It's the main flow, main flowway all the way through Gateway, that connects all the weirs.
So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
I don't know what that has to do with aeration.
Well, the water, all the water, it's like, you know, the, the, a tree and the, the roots and the-
Yeah.
The trunk. We're bringing in that water, but we're treating it, because before it gets to the point of discharge, it goes down the trunk line. So what we're trying to do is to rejuvenate all that water that's feeding in, instead of going to the-
Excuse me, Ed, there's no water involved, all we're doing is putting air.
Sorry?
Yeah, but he's saying the ones that, but the ones that we're picking as priority are those. Because we don't have any ponds in Gateway right now, that the water testing are indicating that there is any production of pond. So there is none that are like on the radar. So then what we decided to look, since they're on the radar, looking at, look at the main ones first.
Meaning largest, meaning-
Or whole.
It would be very helpful to have a-
A visual.
That shows, here's, here's the-
But, but not even that. So we're looking, if it's a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, if you're giving the amount of ponds that we have, we're looking like a twenty grand each.
Oh, you're not going to do it for twenty grand each?
And, and so to me is, even if you put one aerator, which is not what we really want, because we want to have a twenty-four hour turnover, so that's-
One per pond, actually, rather than one every hundred feet.
Exactly, so that's, I guess, the information that maybe we can get from the ponds committee to go over with Daniel. So when we get a, a new version of the public course, we have a better understanding of the, before the cost, what the needs are. Is the needs, and then we'll reflect the cost.
And do you start like from, if I'm hearing you correctly, because we don't have, we don't have a water quality issue right now.
We didn't either, but yeah.
It's all prevented. Is the point, if you're talking about the trunk line, do you start at the, at the top of the, of the waterway feed? So it's getting cleaner and better as it trickles down the system, is that what you're kind of talking about?
None necessarily.
Yeah, we didn't do it, they're kind of individual ponds.
Because they're, it's a flow with system, so.
It's the bang you get for your block.
Yeah.
You're going to get a higher dissolved oxygen if you're dealing with the flowway, at the point where you dump it into six-mile cycles. If you go out here to the farthest pond in our system, which is like eighty-two or eighty-three, and you aerate that, that's a flea on a, you know what?
Yeah, right, so you got to start at the top, because there's, there's a trickle down.
I, I look at it a little differently, and I hear what you're saying, but if you do the flea on the pond out at eighty-two, what I was, what we were trying to present, to, to achieve, was to keep that pond clean, and we didn't have temperature differentials, and have fish kills.
Yeah.
So if, if the fish kills in my, my yard, that's a real problem. But if it's in the middle of the flowway, it probably isn't going down the street.
I don't think we have any of that. Our issue is, is that we need to look at, I know when we were doing the pond stuff years ago, you and I were going out and doing those samples, is that we were always watching the DO, the dissolved oxygen level. And as, as Flavia said, we really never had an issue. We had some issue with phosphates, we had some issues with other things, turbidity and stuff like that. But at this point in time-
But not the TSI, it wasn't yet.
But to go out and spend a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, my, my, my thing is, is that the result is going to be not measurable.
You're, you're probably correct, because we've never had a problem with water quality in Delaware. Not even coming from the dump.
In ten years, like one, one off.
But that's not what drove us.
Yeah, and then, and then I think what we talked about too is, the ponds under the FPL easement, we almost said that those ponds would not follow within the pond standard. They could have the lotoras all the way around, because we're using, because there is no homes, there's nothing.
Same as conservation area.
We're using them as a filtration system before it gets to down there, so, but, you know, between Hampton Park and then Gateway Boulevard, so all those ponds that are under the FPL easement, the lotoras there are, what would you say, overgrown? But we wanted it that way to be able to maintain.
The only thing we might have revisited with better knowledge at the time in Pelican is, I kind of wish we had taken samples of the pond flooring, how much algae have we accumulated, or how much debris had we accumulated? What was the level of that before we put the aeration in, and what was it three years later? We did not do that.
That might be something.
We only did it on one pond, Pond Thirty-two, I think, out by the Adonis, because we had major problems out there. But I don't, you know, because they told us, if you do this, then you gain thirty years of-
My, my whole thing on all this is, I just don't think we've gotten all of the information we need to know of how we're going to electrify these aerators. And that is critical. I know two ponds there, or three ponds, one oh-nine, one sixteen, and one fourteen are linear ponds, and they have nothing. And we can't even do anything in our community to touch a transformer that FPL says, you've got to upgrade the transformer.
And clearly, that's one of the big issues.
It's going to be problematic, and I, I think we just kind of stopped this whole process of where we're at, because you've got to have the energy first. You don't have the energy, you're not going to-
You're dead.
You're dead.
How do we calculate the quality of a pond, or, or pond's, or a pond's health, just in general? I mean, I'm sure the water is probably what you measure.
So as of we're doing right now for the ponds tenders, I think there are nine areas that we look at. And then there's a calculation, which is the TSI, so anything below, I'm just trying to do it.
Sixty-five, I think.
Seventy.
Yeah, you don't have to give it exact, so it's water quality.
Water quality, fish kills. That's a big, a fish kill if you have temperature differential, or whether you have a-
What about just, like, if you're looking at the health of a pond, is it-
That's TSI.
What about just fish in general, or, you know?
Well, and we stock them, because you need fish.
We just started stocking, so I know we had a very small budget on that, but that, and, and pond's health also includes banks. So I'm not sure what you're, like, you're asking more on the water side, right?
I, it was more of a general statement, because-
You don't want it to stink.
You don't want the algae there.
You don't want it to stink.
Don't want dead fish.
Okay.
You don't want dead fish.
So that's my only feedback, see if we can revisit with ponds and, and have effort staff on that one seventy-nine.
Yeah, we ought to know if we have electric anywhere right now.
And, and as far as the, the storage facility, I know that was initially what we were going to put at the back soccer complex. Now we are potentially looking to relocate or have options on-site. Right? So are we just going to hold, we're just going to hold that eight-hundred K amount?
In the bond, so you were-
So we're, but that's what we're, now we're earmarking that storage facility would be on-site in this location as opposed to in the back, okay?
Any other questions on the projects for Public Works?
I, on this one, I don't think we necessarily need to know how many years left in the estimated life. I don't know how the other members, board members feel, but I would not necessarily have to have a separate column for that. I think a lot of this is pretty-
Well, the issue is, if you're going to build a building, are you going to take and plan for its replacement twenty years from now?
I think we're-
That's, that's the-
That's the purpose.
That's the question you've got to do. If you're not going to do that, then you don't have it on here.
But I think Carol's point, like, we may not need for all these items, just wondering where it makes sense, where there is, where lifecycle does.
Well, what we might be able to do is go back, what she's saying is, when we take the paring knife out, some of this stuff that's loose falls by the wayside. Otherwise, costs are going to get pretty, pretty high.
Yeah.
Any questions for Public Works?
I don't know.
Moving on? Parks and Rec?
That one before we start, F five twenty-six, some of those items, or the budget items that were budgeted for twenty-four and twenty-five, they were not moved out. Yeah.
Like your point of resurfacing.
So that means that the money is already here, to Doug's point.
Some, some items no.
Very small, right? Because the majority of the money is already-
The pool resurfacing?
And so that is, okay.
That's a large one.
And, and so let me ask you, that's the price, that's from a vendor? Hundred and sixty thousand, or are we looking to just paint?
No, it's the same material that was put in the back, tested in the back.
So they're going to just, they're going to coat the whole decking with that same-
They make repairs of any cracks of the concrete, and then they put that, the topping on.
Okay, moving on, clarify. Are we talking the one that's bubbling up and peeling and looking horrible? Are we looking the one on the other side?
The little ones, the little ones that look the same.
Okay, so like, the, the aggregate, okay.
But this is the part, this is the actual price of yours?
Okay, about, hmm, a little more than halfway down, the one that says Commons Amenities, six hundred and sixty thousand.
It's from the twenty-two group bonds there.
Which Pelican is that paying into?
Correct. However-
You don't have an opinion?
Okay, so I should not ask a question?
No.
We're going to have to like, put some type of-
What is it?
Before Pelican pays, after Pelican pays.
More pricing out there.
Yeah.
What I would like to comment on-
Doug's throwing a thought.
Is that, given that the majority of twenty-six, you're going to be building the building, and everything's going to be torn up. What, do you even want this in twenty-twenty-six, or should that really honestly be moved over to twenty-twenty-seven?
It'll be instructed by April, I'm told, by the OAK contractor, it should be done by March completion, April twenty-two. So we will have expenses in-
Six months.
Okay, but there's no, there's not even any notes here. What is the six hundred and sixty thousand for?
It is for the Commons phase, that's already been approved. Phase one-
Is that pickleball courts?
Basketball, basketball.
One, 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 first section?
Yes.
Yeah, we might want to put those notes in there.
So this is more than just moving dirt?
Yes.
Around and excavating and all that sort of thing.
But I thought the first section, it was like three million.
No.
The, the total cost was three million, yes.
But only six hundred and sixty. And then from the sixth, and then the, the carryover, I don't even see it here. Yeah, because we set aside on the bond, six sixty, and then we had, I believe, an almost seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of carryover.
Okay. That had accumulated, we hadn't used it yet.
And, and related to parks only, like, we didn't take it from anywhere else.
Right, right, right.
But then we as a board agreed that we're not going to assess, we already had the money, let's not use it, because we're looking into this project. So we have around seven, I would say seven hundred thousand, plus the six sixty from the bond.
Gives about one point three, one point four million.
That, it's, we already have it, we already assess it.
Plus parking pack fees.
Plus in parking factories, which I think is two hundred thousand.
Three hundred.
But, but this wasn't for below-the-ground preparation.
No, this is for-
This is just physically to put it there.
Yeah, it's not that you're going to see-
Then, I'm with you.
Okay.
Capital.
So then I think we can-
The fencing and courts and that kind of stuff, Carol.
We can make those notes, and then, and I'm just going to go back. Who was servicing the decking?
The courts and stuff themselves.
Are in here.
So it's for the decking?
The six hundred and sixty?
Yeah.
Yeah. Plus the-
It's got to cost a whole lot more.
Plus the carryover, well, we had a carryover at this.
This is, this doesn't, this isn't total cost. Because we have, we have some carryover budget, this is the offset.
Yeah.
This is the budget, only.
Yeah, we only use, we, we, we know it was a bigger cost, and we said, okay, what can we do with six sixty, plus for other avenues that we have that we can collect money, and then there was the park fees, and then the carryover. So we said, that's it, we're not spending any more than that, that's what we agree on.
We're not going to- That new total for the next meeting?
It would have been the same thing of putting all that stuff in here, and then at the bottom, showing those additional dollars to pay for it.
Separating it out. How much is underground piping, how much is lighting, yeah.
So is, it's pool resurfacing and decking, or is one of the other?
It's just the decking.
That's why, okay, because that's what I was like, there's no way, because I remember I think spending ninety thousand on just that.
We just did that, yeah.
So then, so then I would have just removed the resurfacing and just have that.
Yep.
Okay, now I'm more, I have to, I don't have anything else. Anything else?
What is your tentative plan for the Public Works building?
Hi, Mike. Two hundred thousand dollars, I know I said nothing else, but two hundred thousand dollars for the digital message board? I thought that was a-
Put that as a price order.
Are you on the next one?
No, hold on, I just, the, the storage facility, that is technically the public-
Yes.
What do we, from a timeline perspective, like, thinking? We have no idea, because we don't know what kind of structure, we don't know.
No, we already have the structure planned out, it was a mirror image of what basically utilities was going to do here, that way we can save on reengineering. It's, we actually have a meeting with the county, an informal meeting, to find out what they're going to require of us, if they're going to put us through the rainier for everything, or if we can just do a limited development order. Tex-Tac will be here at your next meeting, ask them what their projection is.
Because that wasn't quick.
No.
So we're hoping that this will be quicker, because we've already-
When the deadline's pretty much done, it's just, is the county going to require us to have a landscape buffer? Are they going to require us to have irrigation? Like, what, what are those types of development requirements are they going to make us have? Whereas here, we didn't necessarily have it because it was already on an approved D.O. from years ago.
And the building itself, what is the amount on that?
On this one, it was four hundred thousand.
Okay, so. Okay. All right, that's it.
So the, probably the welcome monument. He, as part of the admin building and the park, he did not, on the plans, engineer called this monument out because it's like, kind of like a playground, it's a specialty item that you literally contract with a sign company, call it. We did not have that in the budget. So I know we've talked about, you know, like, digital message board that we could put in, you know, farmer's market this day, or.
Or meeting.
I have not gotten an actual quote from the sign vendor yet, that was a claims holder. But understanding, depending on if you just want to do a stationary sign, like, Gateway Commons, that's it. Or if you want to do more of a community message, digital message board, that's kind of what I wanted your feedback on.
I think we should look at pricing for both. Because we might price, I think we should look at pricing for both. We might price ourselves out of one option.
Okay, we'll get pricing on both. We already have the electric.
And, and not only that, like, electric sign, I know we talked about, I'm, I'm just thinking, just the traffic that we get, you know, is just there. And I still think there's an opportunity for us to partner with the high school here with a digital sign. I know they charge a fee, but it's minimum, I think it's a hundred dollars a month.
They shouldn't be charging us for shit.
Okay, what is that word today?
Yeah, what's going on, Doug, I'm a fool.
With, all the stuff that we.
Nothing, you don't need to hear, you don't need to add anything right now.
They should.
You're in the dunce line with me.
All the concessions that we've made over there, they should not be charged us for anything.
Yeah, Ed, you can usually count on you for a couple of them.
Sorry.
Thank you. So I would say the charter school added a digital board, so there's an opportunity there for the charter school for our messages, because I'll be honest, it looks so tacky. That sign, when I pulled it in Gateway, and that sign is laying on the grass with their legs up, because that's what it looks like to me, two BBC fights with their legs up.
Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa.
It looks horrible, yeah, that's. Tom, this.
I didn't say it worked.
So, yeah.
Oh, Denny's?
Moving right along.
No, I'm Gateway entrance, like, literally at the entrance.
I don't think Denny's is that much better, it looks like two-by-fours hammered together.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Okay, let's move on.
Please.
So anything else for administration? Pelican Reserve. I will caveat this, this is just from Daniel's recollection of projects that the committees have discussed. The only committee that has met and discussed capital projects for next year is safety and security. The others have to convene and discuss this.
Ponds actually got back to me as well, so the, this five hundred and twenty-five thousand here is actually six hundred thousand for next year because they need to do Pond forty-three. So I, the budget sheets that I'm providing for P-PAC for next week does have the, the three, or the six hundred thousand for that pond. And the one change that they made for safety and security, they had, they made their roadways go to three hundred thousand because they had two sixty and then forty thousand for like another speed hump, and they just combined it all into one for the three hundred thousand. And I was told that landscaping does not have any needs for capital funds during the next year.
So this is just.
In talking with the three chairpersons and the chairperson of P-PAC, and they did not have input into this, ninety percent of these are going to be handled in their own M budget, they're not capital items. I understand why we haven't listed this capital, but from a budgetary process, there won't be capital items.
But Pelican is a little different for these because they don't have a capital fund, like for the general fund, we have, we have a three hundred, which is our capital fund, and utilities has a capital fund, Pelican does not. So there's actually our line items in their O and M budget.
They do have capital reserves.
Yes.
But they choose to fund these things yearly through the operation.
And to, to touch a little more on what Mr. Tinkle had talked about earlier, and I think Chelsea mentioned it as well, when we met, we're going to actually have lines under each of the subcommittees this year, as well as in each of the departments, for both capital projects and for capital reserve for each of those areas that we ensure that the money that we're collecting for those silos stays in those silos if it's not used.
Is that in O-one?
We're going to do it for Pelic, like, you, we're going to do like what you, we're going to do it the Pelican way, like you like to say. So we're going to be adding that into the general fund as well.
Well, I got my gateway.
Like how you guys have your reserves for ponds and landscaping, well, we're going to have that in the general fund as well. So we'll have one for admin, parks and rec, public works, pool, all that, they'll each have their own.
It, it's, it's a lot simpler, I don't think it's great from an account or accountant point of view, but it's a lot simpler for the committees.
I've already set the G Ls up, so we're easygoing.
So talking about capital reserve, in the past, let's say this board has set a capital reserve amount for the general fund for O-one, not, not Pelican Reserve or Manreals, of three hundred thousand. That line item, Russ on the back end, would have a formula and break up three hundred thousand dollars by those silos, so by waterway, by roadway, by, number of third one.
Admin.
Admin. What we're changing to this year is, we're going to look to you and, and say, do you want to do a flat percentage? Into what, each individual silo, or a number? So you'll see, once we get you the first draft of the budget documents in landscaping, you'll see capital project line item in a dollar amount, and you'll see a capital reserve line item. You'll have to tell us what that dollar amount is, depending.
And they don't even need to be handled all the same way if you decide you want to do a percentage in one and a flat dollar amount in another one, that's fine, just, I just need to know what to plug in.
This methodology, I want to make sure I've got it in my head. There's going to be a number of silos in O-one, there will be a number of silos in O-two, and silos in O-four.
Nope. The utilities fund is exempt from that because they do not.
I didn't say that, O-four is exempt.
Oh, yeah, O-four, correct.
O-one, O-two, and O-four.
Yes.
It'll be one of four silos.
Admin, waterway, roads, parks and rec.
In each of those, okay. And then the admin expense to support the silos within O-one is allocated a certain way, O-two, okay.
Correct.
All right.
So our.
I'm not real comfortable and I want to learn, so.
So our plan, Russ and Stephen and Laura are working together on that big, what used to be a monster budget book, we're trying to tear it down, so. So our plan is capital now, starting talking about personnel. On the April seventeenth, we're going to discuss personnel, any capital initiatives that you may have. And then by the first May meeting is also giving the subcommittees time to look at their budgets and give input and have P-PAC, et cetera. The first May meeting is have you a draft, draft of first budget, so you can.
High watermark.
Yeah. And it'll, the, the sheets that you're going to see.
Not far, we'll start.
It's a start, that's correct, this June will be the high watermark.
Yeah, it's, it's a start towards the high watermark.
It'll be the initial draft, the, the first draft. So the, the format that you will see as a board will be exactly like what you're used to looking at in the past, as far as each of the areas will be broken out. Two things will be different, it'll be the addition of those two lines, and the silos will also be on the budget this year. So while we're going through looking at each of the line items, we'll be looking at the dollar amounts for each of the line items, and we'll be looking at what silo they're going to fall in. So there'll be three parts to it this year.
That's a good lead-in to the side.
And for, I'm sorry, for this exercise, flashing forward, there probably won't be a Pelican Reserve capital budget, since they'll have all of these items incorporated in O-N-M. Is that a correct assumption, Laura, based on how you know?
It's semantics, but yes, that's how you want to look at it, sure. These items will translate into your budget as.
Oh, I just want to know if I'm going to see a capital item there, that's all. And I don't think I should, if, if the function of what's going to be done is already covered in the O-N-M, okay.
Because you already have these line items in your budget.
I, I, I understand, that's why I'm just asking.
Do you have a capital reserve?
Correct.
You have the two hundred thousand that they put in every year.
But it'll be broken out under each.
You'll have to decide.
Each of your silos.
So safety.
Landscaping and ponds.
Current, the current two hundred thousand they put out, which is now a lump?
Yes.
They'll just allocate it among the three?
Correct. Yep.
I don't know why, but okay.
Because there's, there.
The way you generate the revenue for it.
Right, roads is assessed different from.
But what I'm saying is, everything in this is already covered under the O-N-M budget. All of these items, you're looking in front of you right now, we, they're already covered in the operating budget. They don't need capital funds.
No, that's fine, we agree.
The reserve, the reserve will need to be.
Reserve's a different item.
Yeah.
There is a separate budget line item, capital reserve, regardless of silos.
No, that won't be the case for this year, because of the new assessment methodology, you will have a capital reserve line for ponds, a capital reserve line for waterway management.
Who determined that?
And because of the way that those things are assessed.
Think about it, think about how.
Okay, I will.
It's not, it's not going to make any big difference, other than.
No, but I, I don't understand why we're doing it. It's just a lot of work for nothing, but I'll do it offline.
Set up a meeting with.
I'll do it offline.
Okay, anything else for Pelican? So again, we're waiting on their input, moving on, great segue of silo conversation. Carol requested at the last meeting that the current budget be provided with the silos and how they were, how each line item was put to the different silos.
No, there was, we took twenty twenty-five and filtered them through the silos.
Yeah. Well, no.
See my big red thing at the top here?
This is not new, this is how it was done.
This is how, that's, the silos, the categories that you're seeing are how the expenses were allocated for fiscal twenty-five.
That's what, okay.
Using the current methodology, not the new one that you guys just approved.
Oh, okay.
So that's why I put this big red thing at the top.
Okay, I see.
So these numbers balance out with what we're currently spending?
Correct. And then this is why, the reason we're looking at this is because this is that third piece that we'll be looking at. As we look at each line, not only are we looking at what the line is, how much we're going to spend, we have to look at what silo it's going to go under as well. So this just gives you a preliminary of, for fiscal twenty-five, this is how this stuff was allocated.
So who's going to be determining the silo? Is it Russ?
That would be you guys.
We are already in.
We will, pretty much done that. We're going to take what we believe, where we believe it should go and recommend that to you. And if you think painting the sky blue should be in waterway management instead of roadways, then.
Well, sure.
We'll have that discussion.
Most of the things are going to fall, pretty common sense, into one of the four.
Right, I mean, parks and rec is pretty easy.
There might be some gray, but most of them are pretty clear.
Yes, and so I, I mean, I took a stab and, and I included, I included the, the version of the budget that you'll see in May, the first meeting in May. I, I included the way that things were for twenty-five and made a few tweaks based on the items that we moved around from the new assessment methodology. But again, they're not set in stone, they're just, either that's where they were, or that's where, based on what we've discussed already, that's where they should fall based on previous discussions. It doesn't mean that they, I have to stay there. So I'm just making a caveat before we have that and everybody freaks out when they see where they're allocated.
But twenty twenty-five.
For twenty twenty-five, this is how these are allocated for the budget that we are in right now.
And it's based on what we have this year's actual budget.
Yes.
So the real comparison will be, when we lay out twenty-five, and then we put in twenty-six, which I assume will be comparable, then we'll be able to see the difference of what has changed or increased as a result of what we've done with methodology and everything else. Is that correct?
Yours is going to be a little bit more difficult because yours is blended before. It was blended before, you didn't have the three or four silos that we had before.
Well, they had the inside and outside the gate, yeah.
They had the inside and outside, that's right in.
So that's what, yeah. There, you're not going to be able to compare apples to apples.
That's what I want to, that's what I want to do.
You're not, you're not going to be able to do that. The, the assessment, the methodology.
Then I'm going to ask, why not, what, what's the difference?
Because of how, how you're calculating this, it's about inside the gate, outside the gate, you still have that.
But the bottom number, when it's all done, is a number.
Oh, yeah, you'd be able to cover.
Not the categories, I understand there'll be ambiguity in the categories.
This year we're going to pay seven hundred dollars.
But if I'm paying a million dollars this year and a million five next year, then I know everything went up fifty percent.
Yeah, yeah, you'll be able to see that.
Yeah, you'll be able to see that, yes.
Okay.
Bottom line, absolutely, yes.
Any questions about the silos?
Ten million, but we'll wait.
Okay, so, when we see this document in May, is it going to look more like?
Yes, it'll look exactly like that.
Which is one?
Yep, it'll look exactly like that with the silo category off to the side.
This is our budget that we approved last year.
Yep.
So you're going to have another column here.
Yep, just like I added here. Yep, the statements I added here will just be added to that sheet.
I needed to come down, so I made.
Because it was very cumbersome to go from here to here to look things up in comparison. If it's, if the silo tells, is right next to the, the name of the line item, it's a whole lot easier.
Yeah, silo is nothing more than a title.
Right.
It's all this.
Stephen and Russ are working on that, that to give to us, and that's why you didn't get it now.
When do you expect it, in twenty-six?
They will not have it to me until.
The first meeting.
Twenty, sometime the week of the twenty-first, so just in time to get it.
Of April?
Yes, just in time to get it. The only sheet that's done was Pelican's because I needed to get that done to get to P-PAC and the subcommittees for their April meetings. So the rest of it, I will have in time to get on the agenda, so it'll be like a week before the next board meeting.
Staff's already working in the background.
Okay, thank you.
We're working on the numbers, it's just the layout that I'm waiting for.
Any other questions about this document?
I did.
I, moving on to District Managerial Orders. I know I mentioned it in the workshop, I just want to say it again, we did get notice that Lee County is doing an eight percent rate increase on their water, effective July first, it's about one minute, so we already took that into account last year because they projected an eight percent increase over five years. So when we did our rate study last year, we anticipated this, we accounted for it.
I also accounted for it on our side for when we, what we have to.
Yeah, as bad as it is, we knew it was coming.
Yeah.
And it's coming in the future.
But I think there's two or three more years.
Three, yeah, it was eight percent each year for five years.
And then.
Twenty-five was the first year.
And then we, so on the other side of that, we did open the interconnect with F-G-U-A last week, so we'll be getting revenue on that side.
We're at about twenty percent, did he?
No.
I don't know, I think that's a.
What, what is that again?
The, we're, we're providing potable water to part of Lee.
Lehigh.
Okay.
The connection up there.
To help them while they bridge with their construction loans or construction projects.
So do we have a building permit yet?
But, it'll happen Monday.
They issued the notice to proceed and the contractor's on a timeline. So they have X amount of days as part of the contract, so I felt that we have been more than patient. And so you'll see, they can go to the commons and do site work and, and move dirt without the building permit because we did get a development order, but they cannot do the vertical construction, told that they will submit today or tomorrow. It was roofing fasteners that were holding up the whole shebang.
In our, in our, in our plan, on the perimeter, do we have barms baked in to that plan?
On the road to the.
We have, we have a landscaping.
Heavy landscaping, but not barms, because I remember the, the fill was extremely expensive, but it's something that I'm totally.
Well, what, what, what about this? What if we were to look at, down the FPL easement? Where I think we filled in some lakes towards that end where. Can we not maybe dig some ponds and come up with our own fill?
We don't need, we don't need much fill, the, the sites pretty much.
No, no, no.
No, I want, I want.
For barms, you know, like barms like Hampton Park, like a heavy, heavy.
I would like, I would like some barms on the perimeter, because again, if you're landscaping on that, it just increases the height.
He wants to build a, a pond now.
No, 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 just like, I mean, that's, that's where that backfill comes from, is from building ponds, that's why we got such shitty soil around it.
Oh, there you did it again.
Sorry.
But if you, but if you do that, you're going to be taking space because of the, the slopes of the, the hill.
Potentially, and I don't even know if, you know, but I'm just saying, it, there may be certain, certain locations within that, because one side is, is a pond, so, you know, but instead of having to put fences necessarily around the whole thing, if you just, I mean, because no one's, I mean, there's only a few places that even, we have to worry about, you know, maintaining access. So let's just think creatively, can we put some, some barms and then heavy, then heavy landscaping? So then maybe you're only controlling access to the front.
We'd have to have stormwater calps reevaluated and.
You've got to search your sheet flow and all.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, if that train is already left the station, that's fine, but I, we hadn't really, I didn't, we hadn't talked about it, so I wasn't sure what we were going to do in front of her, whether barms were baked in or not, so.
And it is, the fill itself is expensive.
That's what I'm saying, we just dig from our backyard.
What do you mean we, staff, or say vendor, come do it?
Like dog balling through.
Spitballing.
Yeah, do the show.
I have no problem, give me an excavator, give me an excavator, no, give me an excavator.
We got it, that.
I can run an excavator too.
Give me an ex, I, I'll run the excavator, Bob will run the truck.
I'll do, go with the excavator.
All right, I'll run.
I'll pull out all your cable lines and your sewage lines.
I'm supervising.
I don't think I should, no, I don't think you want to be responsible.
I don't think, I don't think you want to get involved in this.
Anyway.
I don't have anything else.
Your board at work.
But I, but yeah, if that's, I, I think steadily they'll. Okay, um, anything else?
Tony? Should we do the district ballot, you're done?
Yeah, I don't have anything else. Yes.
Chuck, it's Tony.
A few items, trying to schedule a meeting with the attorney, attorney for the Lennar, she's been in trial, in trial preparation to go. Santa Lou's issue, charge to the pipes have been damaged, what could happen during the rainy season, to affect the lake banks, so. banks, so.
They're losing all this time and the ponds are way down and their fill partner...
I just sent her another email today saying, you know, let's do it before the rainy season. Uh, on Stony Brook, I drafted, the initial draft to the, uh, pre-litigation settlement agreement, sent that to Katie Brooks, she's looked at that. Uh, she, uh, sent it to her partner, I've also drafted the initial draft to the quick clean deed and grants of easement, uh, and putting back for Katie's comments and then what we're suggesting, then we'll send the package to Charles Mann to look at it from WCI Lennar's standpoint. And we have a bunch of work to do on getting the exhibits together, which is going to be fun, just to make sure the district has all the records at easements and the detail as to its improvements.
When will that come before us?
Well, we're hoping for next meeting, but it might, probably May, I think. We want to wrap it up by June, uh, from a budgetary perspective.
Yeah, because that impacts this budget big time.
That's correct. And also we've been working with Laura and Chelsea about how much is in the O4 fund, what can be spent before then or repavement perspective.
Yeah, you've got some carryover issues.
We spoke to, I spoke to JT, the president, and they've actually already sent a resolution in favor of them taking over the roads. Their HOA board already...
Yep, I have that.
Said that. Uh, as part of those conversations, JT really needed to have this done June 15th, if not before, because of our high watermark and not wanting to have an O4 next year. So I asked for them to come up with some viable projects that they could do.
Buy down.
Send down that, those funds.
Or at least you can cover the monies.
Yes, so they've produced a list. Daniel's actually going to meet with them next weekend, their cam to go over that list, uh, and I believe it's...
Put, put lights on that stuff up here.
Big lights. Big bright lights.
Spotlights on the entrance monuments.
I have to commend the HOA because they have been super responsive. Um, I, I mentioned that resolution in another meeting and...
It's actually, it, there is a change.
Yes.
And I was expecting that change to see two years down the road because you look heavier. Have seen a major change with, I, I will applaud that too, working with the district. They're not agreeing with that really because they have been, they're mindful of working with the district, coming up with, here's a problem, here are three or four solutions.
But there's a light at the end of the tunnel now.
Absolutely.
That's, that's the big difference.
There is. Uh, the next item is just that district was served with a lawsuit, uh, I want to get into the details about a woman who allegedly fell and broke her leg at the soccer complex filed back and she's suing the district mainscape and JSM services. Nature of the defense council's been managed by the carrier, never worked with them before, defense council. Now, and the carrier is, you know, very responsible.
Is this recent or in the past?
The incident occurred back in, allegedly occurred, yes, February 24th, 24, a year ago.
Over a year ago.
Yeah.
Anything update? Have you updated Tony?
I don't know if I did today.
High rocks, starting from...
No, no.
Anything else, Tony?
Come in. Have we gotten any feedback or communications? APCA? Uh, asking for... No. Some kind of a meeting?
No.
Down there.
Other than...
Could be.
What'd you say?
They want what?
They won't send out our stuff is what you...
Don't forward our communication.
Again?
No, it has to go through Fay and that they won't send out any of our Parks and Rec stuff, the only out, held, applicable to the, they don't want...
Email.
Email fatigue.
I get nine emails a day from them. One more from us a week is not going to give it speed. I'll, I'll talk to Fay. That's not what she's told me.
You wait around.
I don't have any week. Three to two, I lose over there too. Okay.
All right. I mean, that's just, you know, the more we educate them, all of us, whatever. Anything else, is there nothing else for district, future board business?
Agenda management, um, oh, you have another?
Chinese.
Uh, the auditor will be here at your next meeting to present the audit.
Really? I think I beat my timeline, I actually, we actually got the audit.
Which year? Very good.
We actually got it before.
2022 is done.
We actually got it before the 1st.
It is?
We're happy to report, 2022 is done.
Funny.
And then also, our, um, at our next meeting, Laura, aren't you going to hand for us the, um, based on the weekly tracking, uh, the, um, comparison with the percentages?
It's actually done.
It'll be in the number of... Okay, but you'll have that for us?
My six month announce.
In the 17?
Yes. It's a part of my report.
Because I did not see it on, on...
It's part of my admin report. It's just, we'll be always here in the second meeting.
And based on that report, is that how we allocated 26?
No.
No, that's what I thought.
You, you know, you'll be happy because you would have more if I would... And I think that's what we'll kind of touch about, right? Like 2, 4% higher. Yep. I don't make the report, it's just...
Next.
Uh, anything, anybody have anything?
I could make the report for the whole year from home and give it to you tomorrow.
And do you have anything else for, uh, um, agenda manager and we'll add questions?
Just don't, just make sure you put in the workshop, residents workshop, under calendars for the 24th at Gateway Greens.
Is that four o'clock?
24th of April.
Where is it at?
Gateway Greens.
Yeah, Gateway Greens.
Where to pay for it.
Is it the clubhouse?
What was the time?
Four.
Is that the clubhouse?
I did not have the time.
At the bar?
Camp?
Ed'll buy. Ed's buying.
We're almost at it.
We stay for dinner, Ed?
Is that Masters?
I'm sorry?
Are you cooking?
Can we stay for dinner?
Is that the week after the Masters?
There's a damn lot of questions being asked.
Chelsea, can I explain about the...
That's obvious meeting.
Uh, sure, I, I actually love that explanation. Go ahead, Carol.
Okay.
In the mic.
We want to hear you.
Carol Brockie, Pelican Preserve. Uh, after the pub...
And are you speaking on behalf of, just yourself?
The Residents Alliance.
Okay.
Um, you know, after the public hearing, uh, that we had, I talked to Chelsea about the alliance helping out with, with the emails. My stipulation was that we would stress the important emails, not the fishing derby, not the egg extravaganza and those type of things.
I'm happy you know them.
Pardon me?
I'm happy that you know of those events, though.
I know about those things. Um, and I, and then I wanted to check, I checked with Tom Shaner, who was under the impression that, uh, there was a request previously about, uh, sharing emails. Uh, the database cannot be shared. Uh, the Pelican Preserve Community Association, the database is legally not able to share. They won't even share it with the Residents Alliance, uh, for it. So, um, there's a lot of legal problems with that, with an HOA, uh, with needing those permissions.
Okay, so, so it's, it's an easy one because I went through it electronically, so every resident, including yourself, because you do live at, at Pelican, you have, it's an official record of your association, so if you, if they opted out for email communication, all you need is to send a certified letter, yourself or anybody else, and say, I want those. If they sign up for it, they have to provide it. So that's statute. I'll tell you right now, 7:30, 3:15, get it memorized in 3:05. So they can do that to you. But I don't disagree within, I, I think if they choose, like, we send, I would like us to continue regardless of sending to Fay or to whoever it is. If they want to pick the ones they want to send it out or not, that is up to them because that's the information that we're going to repeat to the residents. You didn't receive it, we send it out and then, you know, and then you can adjust, because if you are hearing from your residents, hey, I wish I had got it, then you have back way into sending it out, so.
So I talked to Tom about the database, I talked to Fay, and Fay said there is an arrangement with you that they have done, if you send something, they would forward it on. And we're looking at the important, uh, important things that, um, you know, data that comes. Um, and for Mr. Geppert, I mean, email fatigue is a main thing when they send this many for, you know, the social clubs, this many for fitness, this many...
For bachi ball, I get it.
You know, I mean, for all of them. And so it's, it's, email fatigue is, is a real thing for us and, but it's, the CDD important ones are important and they are sent for, forward to the residents.
But another way to do it is, I don't know if there's any way you could, I'm assuming you have a website because you have more than 100 homes, which is now required, there is nothing that would restrict you from just adding a link, you know, to your website that says for event or for communication from the district, so the, you know, you'll be able to share that information, that's, that's very easy, so the information is there. So you can choose to send what you think is important to them, but all they want to be available by just one simple click on your website. So that's an option too, and I'm sure Chelsea will be able to help with that as well.
They, they do have, uh, on the website where you can, uh, opt in for, uh, whether you, you know, you want fitness ones or you, whether you want the social ones or you want the residents.
I'm just saying very general, for gateway services, event schedules, click here. And you don't have to do anything because it's going to redirect to the district website.
And it's really important. I mean, I receive the, the alliance, uh, the alliance, the, the CDD emails because I've opted in, and I think that's important to continue to, uh, get people to opt in. And, uh, it's a constant battle, you know, with the technology. And, I mean, with the senior group, there's also the issue of, there are some people who are just not technical and they don't want to be technical. How they do their banking and how they do their stuff, I have no idea, but it is, it is an issue. But I wanted to make sure that's clear that Fay is more than willing to forward the emails, the important ones.
Hi, thank you, Carol. We, we do have that constant contact, I'm sure Carol has signed up for where people can send, the residents themselves can sign up for that, not cordial, it's constant contact, that's all. That's how Randy sends out all the information, all the communications are done through that, and they can sign up to receive whatever they like.
But I think there's, you know, I know that it might be perceived like the fishing derby here, stuff like that may, may be focused just towards, um, you know, the kids, but there's also really good volunteer opportunity, um, that could be appealing.
For grandkids?
Yeah, well, you know, participation for grandkids, but more importantly, there's, I think there's, you know, volunteer opportunity for those in Pelican. I know that's a very active base and, you know, if you don't get to see your grandkids that often, being able to come over and participate in a fishing tournament or, or to volunteer at one of the leagues or one of the events, might be a really cool thing to do. I mean, I don't, I don't know if you have that type of exposure in Pelican, that's probably one thing that you don't have, is kids in Pelican, right? So, you know, that's one of the things we have a surplus of in Gateway, so that's the added benefit of Gateway.
We used to have a park, it went away.
That's the value that we bring to Pelican is kids.
We used to have a playground and it went away. Really, really did. Wasn't used.
Anything else for, um, agenda management for Chelsea?
No.
No? All right, so we'll go ahead and move to supervisor comments, and I'll start with Carol.
I don't have any, no.
Yeah, just one, uh, we all, I think, got a letter from, uh, Mr. Susselli. What, what happened over there?
Um...
How did we get off of our property so far?
Well, we...
I read the whole email, I don't think we did, I think you...
There was a, there was a 10-foot utility easement and that right of way does not follow the sidewalk at meanders, so we were within that 10-foot utility easement, but the utility easement did not specifically call out drainage, so contractors addressing it. We did authorize it.
So we were using a utility easement for the conveyance of drainage?
Yeah, so the contractor's correcting it, um, since then they adjusted and, and we're...
So what are they going to do, go down the sidewalk?
What they're doing, yeah.
Hope we don't bust up the sidewalk then.
Well, the contractor will have, just like if he had continued to use it, they, they have to repair it to its pre-existing condition, so.
Okay, so.
That's all I have.
I had that too. Doug, you have anything else?
Um, just a couple things. So I, I brought this up a while back and I know, Flava, you had mentioned that we are restocking the, restocking ponds. I know with a lot of people that, uh, that I've talked to, it, it seems like the fish population in the Gateway ponds has greatly declined, I mean substantially declined. And I don't know if that is because of just invasive species, um, uh, and again, my, my boys fishing stuff, so it seems like they are catching a lot of, um, invasive species more these days, but, um, one of the things that we should probably look at is, I know we're doing some stocking today, but I think we need to maybe have L or, or figure out how we can assess.
That's one of your first deals, uh, showing that you've got a D.O., solid oxygen level. One of the things we ought to be looking at, so maybe, make, and keep in mind, we are drastically knocking these pond levels down to do the lake bank projects, so the, uh, whole environment of that pond is probably a little shook up.
Yeah.
I mean, we're moving that water three and four feet.
Well, I'm talking, I'm even talking about historic ponds that, um...
You don't see any bass, I mean, honestly, that's, that's a, that's a...
Have you seen otters? Because a couple of years ago, otters went through a Pelican marsh and wiped out all the fish.
The only otters that we have is down the FPL easement, there's one right, and those three ponds, um, there, that's the only location that I've seen otters.
They will wipe out.
And just because it was in the back, I'm, I'm, where I used to live on progress, but it, so I think we just need to take a look at it because that's why I asked the question earlier, like, how do you...
Is, is there a recognized fishing club in Greater Gateway?
No.
No.
In Pelican, they, there is one. And they set the...
There wouldn't be one in Stony Brook, but all the neighbors complain when the, when people fish.
And we have, and we have a good turnaround with the fishing contest, but that's an opportunity, we can have an invasive species contest, you know, like catch the most...
Because they promote the invasives and encourage their fishermen to remove them.
So that's the thing, L did that to, for, pulling out and then, and she was like, humanely, how does how you kill them?
But then they also stock them, I mean, we stock, not invasive.
Not for $3,000, I believe that's within our budget.
Yeah, so we need to increase...
We have $10,000 a year.
And if you're, and if you're releasing, you know, several thousand, um, you know, baby bass, if you've got an invasive species issues, they're going to get gobbled up pretty quick, so they don't even have a ton of mature.
They only buy them from the state, so I'm not sure what the size of it is, but all fish purchases are from the state.
So anyway, I think we should look at that, maybe you can have staff or even a specialist or someone just take a look at it, if we need to increase the budget, because I think that's...
We might want to take and go to those weers, the three weers, just right off the bat, uh, check on the DOs and some of the other levels and just see what they're like.
See what they're like, yeah.
I will voluntarily go with a virgin poll and make sure that means invasive.
I have some volunteers that would be willing to do that for you, but...
I don't remember how many sites we do at Pelican, but there's the data, like 15 years worth where the, about five or six sites.
Our four contractors on their lunch break keep trying to fish in the ponds and I keep getting complaints in total.
Yeah, well...
They're, they're allowed, but whatever.
So, nothing else there?
No, I do, um, so, um, I mean, Rod brought it up and I, I'm not bringing it up because Rod brought it up, but, you know, we have continuously had conversations around trying to improve the methods and means that we use for pond bank restoration. And, you know, I mentioned earlier that we, I think we always try to have value engineering and do things more cost-effectively, and, and we created a standard that, I think the standard that we use today, um, one of the reasons for that is because we didn't want to have to re, spend all this money and, and do the same work in five years or whatever. So we tried to find solutions that last and that were aesthetically pleasing, but more importantly, they were functional. But I do think it might be worth for us to stand up either a ponds work group or maybe or maybe let's just have a workshop at some point in the near future, where we can actually have some good debate on means and methods for how we're, how we're dealing with ponds, whether it's materials. Now, I don't think the end product should be any different. I think we should use number four stone, and the look and feel should be the same consistently. But what's underneath?
Well, Rod's not totally up to speed. We have tremendously reduced the amount of Armamax we're using.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Tremendously.
And I understand that. But I do think, I don't, I don't know the last time we really had a, had a workshop where we brought in experts and said, "Look, here's, here's what we're using. Here's how we're using it. Is there comparable materials?" And, you know, looking at what we have to do left, at the state of what's going on, it used to be supply chain a couple of years ago, coming out of the pandemic. It was just really difficult to get things. Now, we've got other things like tariffs and other stuff that may, that may drive prices up. So, either we're going to have to do one of three things. One, continue doing what we're doing, whatever the price is the price. Two, maybe have to look at a moratorium, like a stop for two years until the prices, you know, maybe come down, which I don't know if there's an appetite for that. Or three, we look at other cost-effective methods to be able to work on pond. So, I think we spend so much money here, it's worth us just taking a second, having, spending an hour, just have some open discussion. We may come out of it saying, "Look, we're going to just keep doing what we're doing, and it is what it is. That's fine." But I think we should at least pause and have some conversation.
Also, if you recall at the last meeting, you approved an HNGP grant that we were awarded a million dollars. Once we get through design, we're applying for the construction funds, which will only cost us 25% local match. And we have the opportunity to get even that 25% local match from the county with another grant. So, we could have the remaining 21 ponds that are on the pond priority list done at zero cost. Do this difference.
The ponds that have just been done recently are really, the quality of work they're doing is much, much, much better. I think they've learned their lesson on how to do a lot of this stuff. But the quantity of the real high-ticket items, which was the bringing in a ton of outside material to first compact it, has been eliminated largely because we don't have the hugest scarps anymore.
So, we've done the worst ones first, and so, yeah.
We did the worst ones first. And then the other one is, is that instead of going with the Armamax, they're going with the other products to put down.
Like I said, we might be in a good shape, but, you know...
So far, they're looking, the ponds are looking good. I hope they hold up. I hope they hold up.
I agree, but I would disagree. And I visit Pelican Preserve Pond, and I'm sure that Bob will say with this. I have concerns about the means and methods and everything else that was done on that pond.
In Pelican?
Pelican.
Which pond?
30, is it 36?
36.
36.
You have a concern about it?
Have you, did you go off the pond? I wasn't there last week. I mean, there is no coconut metting. It's all gone. They used the fill from the pond to the shore, so it happened on 83.
You're talking about coconut mesh, though, right?
Coconut mesh, yeah.
Yeah, well, we would never do that.
Well, they, we just fit it, like, Pelican.
Yeah, Pelican does it.
Yeah, Pelican. But that's something we, I think we, like...
But I'm concerned, because we spent the money doing it, and if you go look at it now, I mean, honestly, to me, it looks worse than before. Like, all you see is the nine, I walked the entire bank. All you, the coconut meshing is gone. And my biggest thing is the fill. And this is the part that I didn't understand. They save money, I'm assuming, they stole the...
They drenched.
They took it from the pond, which we did that on 83 multiple times. And all that happened was either irrigation or just light rain, or the drains from the home, it washes it away. So, I was actually there the second time, the day after the vendor was there pulling the same sand back, and the sand was already baking out. There was the slope there. That is, I, three and a half to zero on one side of those ponds. Like, it just goes straight down from where this desk is, straight down. There is no slope.
Three and a half feet?
Oh, yeah. There's...
Then I have not been out there to look at that.
Yeah. You know, I mean, it is, it is, it is bad. Maybe if we had latoras to hold down those items, but Bob...
And they will. But we have a number of ponds. I'll look at 36 again. And where our focus is, of course, when you're full, do you have an escarpment? And the answer is, they won't. There will not be an escarpment. Now, if there's the three-foot escarpment when the water's down...
I'm talking about maybe three homes, so the length of three homes, three feet down, three and a half feet down.
And there's what, 100 and some homes there? So, there may be...
We have golf course area, they didn't have, but that, I mean, straight down, like, straight, I mean...
Okay. There might have been a washout. I don't know. Could have had a spring pad. It could have been anything. But I can't speak to it, so I'll just take your word for it and go look. What I've been trying to determine, and I've not been successful yet, is how much money we have spent as a district on our ponds. I don't care whether it's paid for SRF or it's paid for operating money or paid wherever we got it from. The genie gave us the money. But I really would like to know what we have actually spent per pond in total Gateway since we started.
In totality.
Yeah, I think that's a worthwhile number that we ought to have. Which pond did we do in what year, and what did we spend? I can usually find the proposals, but I never can find what we actually spent. So, I think, to your point, Doug, if we totally understand what we have spent and then look at, and look at all the ponds in the total district and whether it's worthwhile. We did two ponds, we're going to do two ponds this year for 180,000 apiece, 47 and 48. And I fully expect them, when it's done, that they're going to be just as robust as the ponds we did with coconut mesh four years ago, because they still look great. We don't have a drop-off. Now, I'm not talking about low water level. I'm talking about when it's at control elevation. And they're working and they're good. So, if we have a problem with 36 with a couple of homes, obviously, that's got to be fixed.
Oh, hold on, I'm sure. I think you have a problem with 36 all the way around.
Okay. Well, I said, I'll go look at it.
The drop-off is some home. But because you have no latoras, and I'm saying, even with latoras, we have latoras, I'm just going with 83, it helps some. But when I'm telling you, all the sand is all into the water. I took some...
Yeah, we've had that problem before with the fill. You're absolutely right. The fill's not good.
All I'm saying is, does it make sense for us to have a conversation? I mean, and I love it when, you know, Ed said that we're, what we're doing today is much better than what we were doing, and we're driving costs down. That's great.
And we are. But nevertheless, you're not going to make a fundamental change in the way we fix them in Greater Gateway community, because everybody's going to go and say, "They got the rocks. It looks beautiful." Now, you're going to try and short me? So, we, you know, we got to look at...
Well, but there's one difference between, and again, we don't want to, we don't want to, we don't want to have some, you know, one pond that we're doing today that is substantially less quality than what we did five years ago.
I get that. I get that.
But from the look and feel, they're stoned around the whole thing, and if we're just using different materials underneath and it's still...
If it doesn't work, yeah.
Yeah, then it's fun.
Aesthetic may not look the same, but then they have to understand that. Yes, Joe, if you just say your name.
Joe Scofield, Karina. I have a question. They, my pond's one that they're going to be redoing, and they just did the surveys to get the 20-foot pond easement. And some of those stakes are like one foot from construction of the houses, which is, I mean, all the...
Welcome to our world.
Well, in any event, my question is this. Where does the slope that goes into the pond start? At that 20-foot mark going down to the pond? Because it's so many, it's, you go out, what, six feet, one foot drop or something like that? I forget what that...
Control elevation up. So, control elevation?
Yeah.
High water mark, control elevation.
Okay. So, what's the slope supposed to be?
Some are, some are six to one or four to one, and I think there's only one in Gateway that stands one. But four to one or six to one?
Four is most typical for us.
You might have this part in there.
Four feet out, one foot down, four feet out, so...
Every four foot's a drop.
Eight feet is two feet.
Right. The two to one after that.
So, if I take a two-by-four out and I level it and I mark...
Yeah.
And that's from that 20-foot mark out to the high...
No, high water mark.
So, right now, it's real low, like, right now, it's really hard to measure, because it's low water level.
Oh, okay.
So, it's one, it's one control level, which means the water is actually flowing to the next pond.
Okay, so it's measured from the controlled water mark?
From the grass, the high water mark, yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
And then, um...
Supervisor comments, do you?
Okay, so I, yeah. Oh, Bob was in there.
Yeah, I've got one. Regardless, Doug, that was rude.
That's why I'm tired today. We're not eating dinner.
Are you fixing?
No, I'm making a phone call.
Oh, oh, oh. Okay, I, this kind of dovetails on what we've been talking about. I'd like to see the Gateway Pond standards updated, and I think it's appropriate now if we merge them with the unapproved Pelican Pond standards, to get to a common standard. To that objective, I'd like to resurrect the Gateway Pond Standard Work Group, or whatever that constitutes, other people that did it before, with the objective of aligning the two documents with the Pelican people and to come out with one district document. We would, I would propose or hope we'd get participants from the Pelican's Pond Group, of course, the Gateway Ponds Group, if such exists, staff and probably a supervisor, to assist in developing one comprehensive district document to present to us for ratification and acceptance later on. I think it's time to update that. And we can handle the things we talked about today, like the torals versus the kind of plants and updating the visual standards.
Would you be open to, instead of, because I will tell you, I mean, Ed and I were in the group, and then I think, active Ed and I, and then I think Jim, and then maybe one more person. So, reenacting that group is going to be, right? So, I think it would be more beneficial for the ponds, and I'll be open to the ponds community doing the document and just presenting it to us, their suggestions.
To the board?
Because the board at the end is going to be us.
Yeah, right. And staff, absolutely.
So, were you recommending...
Yeah, we kept staff, we kept staffed out of the ponds committee...
The first time.
The first time around, right? And, 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 and when we presented to the board then, staff had their say at the, prior to, to the board implementing or not. We didn't have them in going with us. So, we worked. And when we presented it, presented to the board, and then we, you know, the board at that time asked staff, "Do you agree or disagree with that?" So, to me, at this point, I would even like to keep staff out of this. If the board agrees and have their, because they're going to come and give their suggestions, and then you can look at it. You're going to have the document, too, and you, and staff can come to the board and give their suggestion, and then we'll make the decision.
I'd rather not. I'd rather staff work with the Pelicans.
And now that Daniel's there, the whole world's changed. I mean, we have a, we have staff.
Staff, staff is going to, can help facilitate, like, the actual writing or updating of it. So, I'd rather they just work together and then bring it in front of you.
Yeah, and here's, here's...
Yeah, I, I think...
That's fine.
Yeah. It is a changed world. Before, you know, we kind of relied on one person and, okay.
And here's what I would, you know, the kind of guiding principle here would be, we are looking to create a global uniform document. Now, that does not necessarily mean that all of the standards that are in Pelican, that you're looking to, you know, update those in, in the global standard. Now, there's, I'm sure there's going to be some best practices and things that you want to push, that you want to push through. But there are going to be some areas that probably Pelican's just going to have a higher standard. Like, it's something that we wouldn't even...
I'm not quite sure what that would be, but okay.
Yeah, I don't know. And I'm just hypothetical. I'm just saying, there might, there might be some things that...
That's why, that's one of the things that I really want to tackle, that is development orders. We override that, and that's what I hope this will do.
Okay, well, let's not get ahead of...
Oh, no, I know. But I mean, that's one of the driving purposes that...
The purpose is maybe to merge the two documents, but more importantly, it's about having one global standard. I think that's the guiding principle, is create one.
And the standard ought to be based on what's best for our ponds and help us in the entry conditions.
Right, because a pond in Pelican and a pond in Gateway should, I mean, in theory...
They're all the same pond, and we don't want to have to repair these things two or three times. And if there's something we can do that maybe overrides...
What?
Certain prejudice. Okay, that's it. That's the main thing I wanted to know.
All right, so I just want to talk, so two things. I guess Chelsea just tapped out. One is...
So, she's going to set that up? Is that, will staff start coordinating this to get the interested parties together?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll talk to her.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
So, I had one, which was the grass replacement of the turf in front of the, of the school on the right-of-way. I noticed the FGSA, is that what it is?
Uh, are you talking about the sawed-in sand?
No, I'm, I'm talking about they replaced half of it, not all of it. I didn't even look to see if it's taken, because...
The one by the high school?
Yes, yes. So, I know we have no water, so I'm, once they put the saw down, the bahia, I didn't have a problem, because I know that's what it looks like this way, but they were missing half of it.
So, what they put down was already dead, and I addressed that with the contractor. I spoke to the FGWA inspector yesterday, and he was going to make them tear it out and put it back, because they have to water it for the county standards for at least two weeks to get it established, and they did not do that. So, they're going to be coming back and fixing it.
And I get that. For the area that they put in, it's not all of it. It's just half. So, it's a bigger area.
It's...
It's not much bigger, but it's a bigger area. So, I wasn't sure if they ran out of sawed, and then, so just take a look at that, but, but, you know...
I need to go back and look at the pre-con videos to see, because it was bad, but bad before.
Because of the parking, but much further this way. Okay, so I have that. And then I wanted to talk about the backflow issue, and I think Magnolia Lakes was one that we just realized that.
Yeah.
So, when staff went out, and if you guys recall, there were some areas that we were not following within the county standards to have a backflow for utility. And then notifications went out to the...
Backflow preventer.
So, notifications went out, giving time to do it. And I'm speaking on this, because Magnolia Lakes was one that we didn't have it. So, we had to install one. And so, we contact, we contacted our vendor, and everything was great. And so, I got a call from the homeowner that the backflow, because of that meter for the amenity, was in front of their house. So, here, my vendor, it's already done the work, you know, and then Bill was great. He came inside and we're trying to see, like, because none of them, this didn't happen to any residential as of we knew then. And I think Bill says he found, I think, two more.
What was he, some condo or something? Where would you have a backflow for that?
I had to have one, because I have two bathrooms. So, it's literally in the front of the homeowner's home, and it's sticking two feet up in the air.
It's stuck up.
So, so we, so the homeowner was asking, you know, like, can we relocate this? But unfortunately, the meter for the amenity is in front of his home. So, to us to do that, the Gateway Service would have to relocate that meter. And then, you know, then either, either the HWA or the homeowner, because I would tell you, I told him, I said, "The HWA is not going to pick up the cost. You don't want aesthetically there. If you pay your portion, then the HWA will give you a blessing." But then I said, "But I'm also on that board, so you have to go to that board and ask, because there's going to be a cost, you know." So, that's something that we need to think about for not just that, but the other two, because I guess we have to notify. So, that's something that...
We have a couple of them right in front of monuments. They look horrible, but you only have the choice, is you move the meter.
Pay them, pay them in it.
So, so that's the thing. So, so are we willing to allow a homeowner to, are we willing to remove the meter, to relocate the meter and build the homeowner? Because if that's an option, that's the option that I want to give them. But if we're not even going to, willing to do that, then I'm just going to be the one to say, "Look, stays what it stays."
Whoever makes the request is the one who's going to pay the cost.
But that's what, but I want to know if that's an option. Like, can, can I go to the homeowner and say, "Look, if you don't like it..."
I don't know why you wouldn't be able to do that.
As long as there's consent of the...
The homeowner, the HOA for the easement, yeah. So, I have to do two folds. I have to get in a consentment from the HOA to remove that to the HWA property, and then ask the homeowner, "Are you willing to pay for it?" Guys, guys?
Yeah, I do.
Guys?
Perry.
Guys?
Perry. I, I think that's the way to go, just if they want that option and they can get the easement, great.
Okay, so if you can just talk to Bill...
It's an aesthetic issue.
So, just talk to Bill and then let them know if...
Who? Who knows?
At least the one, the homeowner that wants, because we, we comply. The HWA comply. We put the backflow in. We told the homeowner, if that's what you want.
We're out of it at that point, because it's a backflow issue. So, if you guys want to communicate that amongst yourselves and...
No, no, but the meter belongs to you. I mean, I cannot, okay, so if the homeowner is willing to pay the district to relocate those, the meter, you have to tell them the cost, not me, not the HWA.
I know, but we have to tell him to contact us if he...
So, that's what I'm saying, like...
We're not going to call him and say, "Hey, we..."
But that's what I'm saying. So, I'm, I can give you all the information and say if there's relocation. So, then I think communication should go out to the other two homeowners that we haven't started the work and say, "Look, we understand it's going to be here before we start. If you wanted to relocate, there is a cost, and it won't be in front of your house, but otherwise, this is what it's going to stay." Just communicate with them, okay? That's it. That's the only two things I had.